Good evening, welcome to the Brockton School Committee Public Hearing on School Choice. Today is Tuesday, May 21st. We at the Brockton High Rom Little Theater. Prior to this meeting, can we just establish a quorum? This will be a roll call. Mr. Claudio Vega is joining us by Zoom.
Claudio.
Gomes, if I'm saying Vega. Claudio Gomes.
I'll take the compliment.
Claudio?
Here, can you hear me?
All right, thank you. Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Tony as the Vice Chair is here. Dr. Cobb's and Honorable Mayor Sullivan as the Chair is present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. In accordance to the Mass- with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B of the Mass. General Law as amended by the Education Reform Act of 1993 and subsequent legislation, provides for a statewide school choice program. The law requires that each school committee in the state to admit students from other districts under the school choice program unless there is a vote to withdraw from this program by June 1st of each year. Prior to such vote, there must be a public hearing on the issues whether to or not participate in the school choice. At this moment, I will open up the hearing. At this point, I believe we do not have any members that have signed in. I will give a three-minute window if anybody shows up to make any public comment at this time. I don't believe anybody is going to show to speak against or for the public choice. At this time, I will open up the floor to the Acting Superintendent, Dr. Cobb's, who may offer any information whether or not to participate and have a dialogue and conversation with the committee members. Dr. Cobb's, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and School Committee Members. So again, every year, once a year, we have to vote whether or not to continue to be part of the school choice program. We, and I have to report to Desi actually today, but so I would recommend that we maintain what we've been doing with the school choice program and maintain our membership.
Thank you. Any comments from any of the members or questions? I'm Representative Vega.
Just to clarify, because I've been fielding a bunch of questions from folks, just confusion, really. So tonight, what we're voting on isn't a vote on school choice as a whole, but rather whether we'll keep accepting students from outside of our district as part of the school's choice initiative, right?
Well, both. It's to remain to stay in the program or not, and if you do, then you need to vote to accept students. If we send students, we need to accept students.
Mr. Sullivan?
Just to update, Mr. Vega, we have participated every year for grades nine to 12, and I think last year, did we do six to 12 last year? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. No.
Dr. Kornas might remember. Okay, I think it's just nine to 12. To give kids opportunities to participate in our great drama and sports programs, we open it up to grades nine to 12 for the new people. So our new members can understand we've done it every year that I've been on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any, Mr. Sullivan? We will do this in a regular school committee meeting. This is just a public hearing. We will not be taking a vote at this portion of the meeting. Any follow-up questions by any members? Now, I would like to close this meeting. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Oliver, second by Mr. Sullivan. This will be a roll call. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Here, yes.
Chairman, Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Claudio Gomes?
Yes.
And Tony Rodriguez, yes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hereby call the Brockton School Committee to order at being 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. We at the George M. Rom Little Theater here at Brockton High School, 474 South Brockton, Mass. 02301. Before we stand to salute the American flag, I'd like to read the following into the record. Dear visitors, welcome to a meeting of the Brockton School Committee. This is the agenda that will be discussed this evening. Please note the hearing of visitors, which we do have, I believe seven people signed in, is included. It's limited to three minutes to speak. You have a statement or question, please give your name to the secretary. Mrs. Campbell has already given it to me. Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. In addition to attending live tonight, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 8 and also the 1071 HD version and online via the following link, which is www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. At this time, I respectfully ask you to please stand, and we'll salute the American flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will establish a quorum at this time. Vice Chair is School Committee Member Gomes on via Zoom?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Mrs. Sullivan? Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
I'm here. We've established a quorum. This time, we'll go on to Agenda Two, and we also want to acknowledge our student representative, Anthony Vega, for being here, and Jim Cobb's, Dr. Jim Cobb's, the Acting Superintendent, also the clerk of the school committee. This time, Agenda Two, hearing of visitors pursuant to the school committee policy. Each person requesting to speak shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes. Since this period is limited to 15 minutes, a total of five people shall be permitted to speak on a first-come, first-served basis. As Chair, we have seven people. I'm not going to limit to seven, so two additional will be able to speak as well, okay? This time's Angelica Fons, please. Angelica Fons.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Brockton Coalition for Education Justice, and we wanted to highlight items surrounding the EDI office. The decision to cut the four-person Department of Equity Diversity and Inclusion to one position further marginalizes the importance of equity in the community of Brockton. Our community fought for the implementation of this department. To take away from its capacity after such short time is absurd. The role of the EDI Director as a member of the superintendent's cabinet with decision-making power is integral to uplifting the importance of equity work. This is one more example of the committee's making decision without listening to community. As a diverse community, the EDI Department is critical to Brockton. The EDI Office is the only group of school staff at any level that has instituted a systemic way to listen to and work with community leaders. Monthly meetings with community organizations, leaders, and caregivers has been the first step towards bridging the silos that exist in Brockton and would be impossible to pull off with one director for a district our size. In addition, they have worked towards professional development that centers our students' needs. The ACT Conference is the only full-day professional development opportunity for staff in the district and is beginning the push towards mandatory equity training for all staff, which is sorely needed in a district like ours. In addition, they have used this conference to empower student voices, uplift local restaurants, and bring in diverse voices to support staff. Their work supports teachers, students, and families and has helped to prevent bullying and discrimination. Their work is building a culture that allows students to learn in a safer environment. Each school in Brockton has benefited from the EDI's team's work. Resources have been distributed, including books, school audits, and resources to enrich each school's curriculum and culture. Young people have benefited through their involvement as summer interns and in this work to support schools. Newer staff of color have been supported by specific affinity groups, and established staff members have been empowered to lead and be mentors within these affinity groups. You should know that retaining quality educators of color continues to be a challenge, while studies continue to prove that quality educators of color benefit the growth of all students. The EDI team has implemented specific strategies based on this data. Students at the middle school and high school level have been empowered as members of school-based equity committees and these group models for young people that the work of EDI looks like, and while also training young leaders benefiting from our community now and in the future. This department has been an integral part of school climate since its inception. Having a member of the EDI team on all hiring interviews is a necessary piece of building a district that hopes to increase its anti-racist practices. One director cannot possibly be everywhere. The EDI Office significantly enhances the city's social and economic landscape by promoting fairness and representation for all residents. It ensures equitable access to resources, services, and opportunities for all and enriches the cultural fabric of our city, attracting businesses that value a diverse and inclusive environment. Ultimately, the EDI Office strengthens community bonds and enhances the quality of life for all Brockton residents. In a time where EDI work is being pushed to the side across the nation, Brockton should be leaders. The importance of equity, diversity, and inclusion cannot be minimized. While budget cuts are necessary in order to fix past mistakes, let's not continue to make more mistakes. Your budget is a moral document, what you are saying to our community and our children when you marginalize the work of equity. I urge you to reconsider this decision, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. John C. Williams, please. John C. Williams?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Brockton. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, School Committee. I come before you today as a proud resident of Brockton for over 40 years, a father of five, a community mentor, and I've been a community servant of Brockton for over 20 years. I can list all of the things that I've done, volunteered for and worked for in this city, but it would take most of this three minutes. For the past two months, I've volunteered within the Pluff School. I've spoken with Vice Chair Rodriguez. I've spoken with Ms. Sullivan, a few other School Committee members. We've spoken with Dr. Cobb's. We've been in communication with your office.
Staff, yep.
City just gave me another call today. We're working things out on that side. Just this week, we invited Principal McCaskill down to the Pluff so that we can start a new process of bringing our high school principal down to our middle schools to engage with some of our students that are going to be troubling next year. He actually did, went a step further and took on those seven young men as his personal advisees for next year, which was wonderful. We're looking to do the same thing over at South Middle School, and it also serves as a recruitment tool, because even though we do offer school choice, we would like for our students and our parents to choose Brockton. And with that all being said, we have been an integral part for over a decade in offering programming, offering supports to not only our students, but also to our staff, our administration, our school administrators, as well as our district administrators. We've spoken with the Brockton Police Department and gotten their support. We've spoken with multiple school staff and administrators and received their support, and we've come before you all, because everything put aside, I believe that we all are looking for the best interests in Brocktonians, and we're looking to sit down at the table. We have other community organizations with us. We're looking to sit down at the table to see how this works. We've worked in challenging budgets before. When we started, there was a $16 million deficit, and so we know before COVID and all that, we dealt with deficits all the time. But if we are looking to help our children, we believe it's an urgent situation, and that's why we're in there volunteering right now. But that's not sustainable, and we have to do something sustainable for our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Odell Wilson, please. Odell Wilson?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's interesting for me to be back here again. I'm a Brockton High School graduate from 1985. I am a Brockton resident. I consider myself a Brocktonian through and through, no matter where I've been for the last 20, 30, 40, 50 years. I just retired as a federal probation pre-trial service officer in the District of Minnesota. I, anything that I am able to present myself to be is because of Brockton and because of the people that invested in me when I was living on the Eastside Projects and had an opportunity to have people who cared enough to pour into me with, they didn't call it mentorship then, they called it the village, you know? It takes a village to raise a child. And as I think about that, I, you know, I was talking to someone the other day, and in African culture, a lot of times when they come together and meet with each other, the first question that is asked is, "How are the children?" So when I come to Brockton, I say, and I'm sitting in here and I'm saying, "How are the children?" Because how your children are will determine how your future would be in your schools, in your cities, in your communities. And so when I say that, I say that with, with an open-ended question. I drove by the football field, I got little jitters, I was like, "My goodness." I still get this weird feeling when I go past that field because of the way things used to be when I was in competition, and those days, those days were so long over. My knees will tell you the same. I am, I had a lot of conversation with my brother, who was a mentor, and John, who was a mentor, my father was, John's coach, mentor to him, and they were telling me about the mentorship and kind of how things were and loving it, you know? I mean, everybody's had the issues in life, and so I said, "I'm going to come to Brockton." I said, "I believe you, but I, I said, "I trust you, but I need to go see for myself." So take me where all this good work is going on, because if it's, if it's good work that's going on, and they've been out of schools for a bit, and I'm going to be quick, because I know I have 45 seconds. So I went to the Pluff School, I went to North, I mean, sometimes South Junior High School, Pluff School, and it was amazing to see how the reaction that they got from the administrators and the students. You know, for individuals who are no longer working there, it was really surprising, you know, to see. But what I saw is that you did have, you do have something that works. I know there's a budget thing and all that, and you're smart people will figure all that out. I just want to just encourage you to remember the children, and if you had something that was working for the children, get back to it. Figure it out, whether it's the budget or whatever, and allow these individuals, whoever they may be, to continue to do the good work, because in the end, and I'll be quick, I know it's where it zeros, we all win, and it's, the community wins, the teachers win, the students win, the parents win. Law enforcement wins when you have what you have, when you're invested and pouring into these kids, really starting at an early age. So just want to employ you, remember the children.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Candace Howard, please. Candace Howard?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I address you tonight as a concerned parent of the child in the Brockton public school system. I approach this podium with a sense of reservation. While I have been assured that this committee attentively listens, the absence of response leaves me skeptical. Nonetheless, I stand before you tonight with a pressing issue. I have spoken before this committee regarding the closure of our BVLA Elementary. Along with a few dedicated parents, we have worked tirelessly on ways to address the needs of our students we serve, including our homeless students. We have done so much research and developed some ideas. We have supplied to each School Committee member and Dr. Cobb's this evening with a copy. I ask that this School Committee to work collaboratively with stakeholders to ensure that every child receives a quality education and the necessary support to flourish. I ask that you please continue to provide a pathway to learning. I have reached out to other single-district virtual schools and learned that Fall River will salute me joining us. I also learned that other district numbers are lower than ours. So I urge you to reconsider the decision to close our school and start viewing BVLA Elementary as a valuable resource. This school has the potential to address broader challenges and provide critical support to so many students in need. The consequence, the consequences of this and all decisions extend far beyond the confines of administrative deliberations. They deeply impact the lives and the futures of all of our children and families here in Brockton. It's time to share the load and allow a role for parents and community members to help restore Brockton Public Schools to its shine. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Thomas, please. Eric Thomas?
Good evening. Good evening. Hello, everyone. Thank you all for coming tonight. I am here to represent, or as a representative of, the Critical and Analytical Thinking Team that has hopes to make it into the Brockton School System. I will speak for myself when I say that what I will personally be bringing to the team is my expertise as a holistic coach. As a holistic coach, my job is to meet people where they are, regardless of the situation they are in, and provide them information that will help them move forward and help them find hope. It sounds like that's very necessary here, as I've heard from the speakers who've gone before me. My personal goal is to provide information and insight that not only allows children to succeed, but may rekindle the flame of their interest in learning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll be back.
Thank you. Mr. George Brickhouse. George Brickhouse, please.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Wow. You know, God is so good. I mean, God is so good because he says that if two or more are gathered, then he is here with us. So those of us who believe are on the premise that God is in the house with us, and that alone is enough to motivate anyone who wants to see the best for the community and the children of the community. That's our future. Our future is those that we need to take care of now, because somehow we got siphoned off into fear and selfishness and monetarily greed, and we lost focus, and I believe we lost belief, which is the most important thing, because if we have faith, then we can have hope, and if we have hope, then we can have faith. I'm here this evening because sitting at that table right now is the mayor, who is aware of the CAT program, Critical Analytical Thinking, who has said that at one point, when he saw it, "Can we get this into every school?" I said, "Not right now. We need to do this as a pilot program," which Mike Thomas wanted to do. Mike and I were supposed to meet here at 2:00 on a Tuesday to sign a contract to show me the room that the program would operate out of and the teacher who would be in the room to represent the union. I believe Dr. Cobb's has also a copy of the program, which he asked for about three weeks ago. Mr. Rodriguez, while we were sitting in the red auditorium in the summer, said, "I would like to have that program here." So there are people, and Mr. Gomes and I had lunch about three, four weeks ago at Fast Betty's on Warren Ave, and Mr. Gomes left with a copy of it, said, "How can I improve on this?" And those who've been at the table prior to this session also had the program when it was first initiated, and the program works in between fifth and 10th grade. Fifth grade, because that's where you're just starting to recognize, "Ooh, this is my body and who I am." 10th grade is because in the ninth grade, you've come to school for girls, boys, and lunch. In the 10th grade, you might want to start learning, and I believe that the Critical Analytical Thinking Program can make Brockton what Brockton needs to be, so Brockton can rebound, and that look that people give you when you say you're from Brockton can be changed to, "Oh, damn, y'all got that CAT program going up there." And with the CAT program, the kids are moving forward, and they're learning, and the program itself has people coming from different programs who want to be part of what we will do to rebuild Brockton and make it like it should be, as it was, and what the future will make it. So step up or step off, but if you're for Brockton, then be for the kids.
Darryl Price Jr., please. Darryl Price Jr.
Good evening. Hello, everyone. I'm a seventh-grade student at BVLA. I like to talk about the current issues, about the budgeting and technology, as well as the programming. At the moment, our technology issues, some students aren't able to get to class due to the laptop being outdated or not having good specs. Some students are unable to turn on their computers. Some students are unable to charge their computers, or it'll take an hour to just load Clever or Schoolology. Now, without Schoolology, they won't be able to access Kami, The Word, or any assignments. Some students are getting write-ups due to not attending class without, due to these problems. And at the moment, they are getting rid of the elementary kids due to budgeting. I feel that it's not right for, just because we don't have the money for elementary kids who've been here for a couple of years. I've been to attend in BVLA since fifth grade, since it's first opened, and I feel that it was way more comfortable than attending into a public school in person, and I could cook my own food, I could be there with my dad, who could help me with a assignment. And not only that, some of the programs, such as Varsity Tutors, which we are meant to attend every Thursday. For me, I could not access Varsity either on my school computer, my personal computer, or even my dad's computer, because the program would be completely wiped, or I would be able to get in, but I would not be able to communicate with my tutor, who I do like. She, her name is Jamie, and, and, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
Don't be nervous. You're doing great.
Thank you. And not only that, it's, BVLA was also helpful for my dad, who has severe anxiety when his children aren't with him. He has been doing some traumatic stuff from his job where his, a crate had fell on him, and he had had his leg cut open and replaced his bone with a metal piece, as well as his neck, where they had to replace another one of his knee. He's with a piece from his neck, and he feels that it's way more comfortable for him. And he's also handicapped, which means he's unable to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you, hearing of visitors. That does conclude Agenda Item 2. We will now go on to Agenda 3, which is reported Superintendent of Schools, Dr. James Cobb. Dr. Cobb, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First order business is the teaching and learning for the student representative, Anthony Vega, to do his report.
Hello, everyone. This will be my last meeting as student representative of Brockton High, and I wanted to say a few words about my time here. Growing up in Brockton and being in the school system, I'd always heard about our negative reputation, and it was something that I never understood. This has been prevalent, especially the past few years, but I can say with complete certainty that being a Brocktonian is one of the best things to ever happen to me. I've been provided with every tool for success and much more, whether it be athletics, academics, religion, everything that I could ever possibly need, social aspects, the relationships I've formed, I could always find them in Brockton. I couldn't be more proud of what this city has given to me. And I know that this committee and staff are on track to restoring the reputation that Brockton once had, and I know that it still has, it just needs to be shown to the rest of the surrounding towns and everywhere else. Before I stop, I wanted to say thank you to the committee members for the opportunity to be a student representative and voice the opinion of my peers. So thank you, Mayor Sullivan, Dr. Cobb's, Vice Chair Mr. Tony Rodriguez, Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan, Mr. Vega, Ms. Oliver, Ms. Azak, Mr. Gomes. In addition to them, I want to say thanks to Mr. McCaskill, our new principal, who's been wonderful so far, and I know he'll keep up the good work, Ms. Campbell, who's been there to help me every step of the way, and Ms. Marion, who allowed me to have this opportunity by picking me, and for everything that they've done and continue to do for this community. Now that I've said that, I'm excited to introduce our new student representative, Stephanie James, and I have no doubt that she'll do a better job than me, which are big shoes to fill. And with that being said, I'll pass it over to her for her first meeting.
Before I get started, I would like to thank Anthony for introducing me and doing a great job as this year's student representative. I would also like to congratulate him on his new journey at UMass Lowell. I'm sure that he'll do a great job representing Brockton High there as well. As you all know, I am Stephanie James, a current junior here at Brockton High School as a Yellow House student. I honestly don't know who's more excited, me or Ms. McLaren, to have a Yellow House student representing Brockton High. I had become a student here not too long ago, when I had transferred here during the end of my sophomore year. In my time of being a member at this building, I've been able to utilize the many educational and extracurricular opportunities that this school has to offer. In my past year here, I've had the pleasure of pursuing my passion for theater through the Brockton High Drama Program, as I was able to participate in their yearly Fed Festival Play, as well as participate in the weekly debate club that helped me get out of my shell and become more comfortable with voicing my opinion. In addition to exploring the variety of clubs, I've also been able to academically push myself through the school's AP and IB program, which has given me the outlet to broaden my knowledge on the courses that I'm most passionate about. Growing up and moving from school to school and finally moving here to Brockton High has shown me that there is a vast amount of opportunities that can come with high school outside of simply learning in a classroom, which is why I'm very glad to be sitting here today to become a more active member in the school community and shine light on all the positive things that can happen here at Brockton High. And before I get into the PowerPoint, I would like to thank Mayor Sullivan, Dr. Cobb's Acting Superintendent, Vice Chair Mr. Rodriguez, School Committee Members, Mr. Vega, Mr. Gomes, Ms. Azak, Ms. Oliver, Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Sullivan, and our principal, Mr. McCaskill, for having me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The BHS Fine Arts Department has debuted their 38th Annual Harbor One Bank Fine Art Show. It featured the work of dozens of students and showcased the creativity and artistic talent that they possess. It took place on May 7th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and I hope everyone got a chance to see the different pieces of art on display. Student ambassadors. I wanted to say congratulations to our student ambassadors, Bian Silva-Viana and Damanika Bray, who are representing BHS in Korea. This opportunity was set up by the Education Divide Reform Institute, and we hope that they have an amazing trip. Boxer baseball. After three huge wins against conference opponents, New Bedford, Dartmouth, and Durfee, the Boxers moved to first place in the Southeast Conference with a 3-1 record as they make their push for the playoffs. Girls' track. BHS Girls' Track finished their season strong, taking second place in the SEC Championship Meet. Standout medal winners include Anya Rizzo, Catherine Moyes, Isis Price, Jada Fertado, Ava Montero, and others. I know that they can take it home next year, but still, congratulations to the successful season from the players and the coaches. The Wedding Singer. The BHS Drama Club's latest musical, The Wedding Singer, debuted a couple of weekends ago, and it didn't disappoint. From the musical scores to the acting spectacles to the set design, the Drama Club just doesn't miss. IB and AP exams. Big sigh of relief from all the IB and AP students who took testing over the past few weeks. Congratulations to the testers, and I know that their hard work and studying will pay off when they get the scores. MCAS exams. This week marks the start of the math MCAS exams for many sophomore and junior students. I know that with hard work, effort, and diligence, you will do an excellent job on the test. Good luck. Senior prom. The class of 2024 senior prom is coming up fast. Tickets were available to get last week and this week, and we're all excited to finish out the year with prom at Gillette Stadium, thanks to Ms. Tucker, Ms. Braffy, and the 2024 class officers. Senior graduation. A huge congratulations to the graduating class of 2024. Their ceremony is being held on Saturday, June 1st at 11:00 for anyone wishing to attend. Seniors are allotted six tickets to give out, and tickets are $5 for anyone wishing to purchase their own. BHS students may attend for free, given that their ID is present with them at the time of the ceremony. Student feedback. As Anthony said, the school is headed in the right direction. Just got to keep up on enforcing accountability and safe learning environments for the success of the students. I would also like to recognize Principal McCaskill's wonderful job towards leading the school in this direction. His continuous hard work and effort don't go unnoticed. Thank you for your time.
So, thank you very much, Stephanie, and welcome aboard. Next is the introduction of administrative interns with Dr. Moran. Next, after this.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say, as a proud parent of two recent Brockton High graduates, I want to thank our student representatives for all of the hard work that you always put in. My husband and I watch these meetings and reminisce on the times when our daughters were here at the school, and it's really amazing that your peers must really look up to you and appreciate all that you do to highlight everything that goes on here at Brockton High. So thank you for your dedication to the high school. And tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing our administrative interns for 2023, 2024. The Administrative Internship Program is an opportunity for BEA members to work across the district with both the district and a school administrator to gain a deeper understanding of how our district operates following a rigorous interview process. The interns leave their positions the end of April, and then they work throughout the rest of the two months before the end of the school year. And the work that they do on multiple projects benefits all of our students across the districts. So this year, we have three interns. I'll ask each one of them to stand up as I introduce them. Our first intern is Shawna Gray. Shawna will be working at North Middle School and in the Office of Student Support Services. Our second intern is Kelly Getterter. She will be working at Ashfield Middle School and the Office of Student Support Services. And our third intern is Simo Wuzani, and he is working at the Brookfield School and in the bilingual department. Not only do they have multiple projects with their administrators, but they're also going to be assisting Dr. Karen Spalding on the preparation for the Huntington Parade. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Next, we'd like to do some recognitions. One is for Anthony Vega, BHS student representative to the school committee.
Dr. Cobb?
We'll get a picture.
We just, I just wanted to say, Anthony, it's been a pleasure. Love your presentations at the meetings. So best of luck at UMass Lowell. We're all proud of you. You're always, you're always a boxer, so you're always more than welcome to come back. So we'll see you at graduation day, and I believe prom is Thursday?
Yep.
So stay safe. Have a great time. You're welcome. But we're always proud of our Brockton High graduates.
Do you want to ask if anybody else wants to speak?
At this time, does anybody else want to speak relative to Anthony? Ms. Oliver, please.
Also, Anthony, just if nobody knows, he received a scholarship this weekend for Aspiring Hustlers Foundation this weekend. Congratulations. You well deserved. And thank you for everything you've done, and the future's bright for you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Anthony. Great presentations throughout the year. We don't want to talk about the negatives, and I like the way that you showcased all the positives and staying level-headed and showing what BHS is all about. We have tremendous stories. All the students go into higher education, to Ivy League schools across the board. My son will be calling you because he is a former Riverhawk in fraternity life, so you already know. And I know you ate all that food from the Greek festival the other day, so, thank you, and I appreciate you, and good luck, and I'll see you on the field.
Anybody else at this time? As chair and as mayor, Anthony, I just want to say thank you. I met you many years ago when you were a young kid playing baseball with my son Tommy, and you were an awesome kid then, and you've really matured to be a proud Brocktonian. So everything you said tonight, we are so proud of you. You're going to really conquer UMass Lowell. So you did an exceptional job here as a student rep, and best of luck in the future. Thank you. Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, I'd like to recognize Thomas Renaud. He's the Education Producer and Production Associate for Brockton Community Access. We'll be without him every night.
Come on down, Thomas.
Also, this is Thomas's last night with us, so he's going off to college.
So just point of information, Thomas has been an unbelievable, really unbelievable, dedicated Brockton Community Access. No matter what we do in the city of Brockton, on the city side and the school side, he's there on behalf of BCA. He's going on to pursue a master's degree, so he's leaving BCA. He's going to be working this summer. Is it Camp Squanto?
Yes.
Camp Squanto. So he's just an unbelievable, he comes from an unbelievable family as well. And Thomas, thank you. Anytime we called, you came. Long hours, long days, but you always excelled in illustrating what a wonderful community and city Brockton is. So thank you very much, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I'd like to do an introduction to our grants manager, our new grants manager, Mr. Camilla Jackson. She's been with Brockton Public Schools for 12 years now. I won't steal her thunder, but we've been working since, what would you say, Sharon, since October, November, with a grants committee to try to formulate a team to look at our grants process and procedures. And after several meetings, we have a rough draft review tonight for what that's going to look like in the procedure instruction manuals and how we rule out the grants and administrate the grants program going forward. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Camilla Jackson, and I am the new grant manager, writer for Brockton Public Schools. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present tonight. I would like to thank, first, I would like to thank the members of the grant committee for embracing me on this journey and helping me transition into my new role. I would like to thank Dr. James Cobb's, Sharon Walder, Patricia Boyer, Sean Daxberger, Robin Carbonara, Jerry DeGrassa, and Janet Landerholm. Thank you so much. I would like to present to you the office's new procedures that we have established together as a committee in order to increase accountability for all awarded grant funding received by the district. Please note that these procedures are in draft mode, and we are working to improve them daily. All right. So first, I would like to introduce to you some of the goals I've had since being in my new role as grant manager. My first role has been to solidify relationships with federal, state, and local organizations to help initiate opportunities for future grant funding. Most recently, I've had the opportunity to attend a federal grants conference, in which I had the opportunity to meet many fellow grant administrators from the Commonwealth, as well as our DESI liaisons for Brockton. Another goal I've had was to create a BPS grant manual for future grant facilitators and others who are involved in the grant process or want to learn more about this. This is included in your package tonight as a sample page. Another goal I've had was to identify professional development needs for grant facilitators and provide resources for training. As previously mentioned, attending the grants conference, I had the opportunity to discuss future training opportunities for our future facilitators. So training in GEMS and EOE, which is a new grant management system, will be frequent and happening throughout the year. So we've also been communicating to grant facilitators to ensure that they are requesting their drawdowns, keeping accurate records, and measuring performance as requested. So now, I would like to take you through the BPS Grant Lifecycle Linear Model. This model will be eventually added to the grants manual and used to follow steps for submitting and managing a grant. This is just a glimpse of the linear model that will be used, but let's take a look at them together a little bit more in depth. So the first step will be the grant selection. The grant facilitator meets with the grant manager to discuss the grant before applying. The grant manager must present the grant to cabinet and school committee before giving the grant facilitator approval to apply for that grant. The second step is the grant submission. The grant facilitator meets with the grant manager to discuss the application and the budget. The grant facilitator applies for the grant. The grant manager, after reviewing the budget and the grant application, will review the application along with the grant facilitator and submit them together, submit the application together. The third step will be the grant approval step. Once the grant award letter is received, the grant facilitator completes the grant cover sheet and the Munis Budget Codes document to submit to the grant manager for Munis Access to Funding. Once the Munis Budget Codes and the grant cover sheet are completed, the grant manager then submits those documents to the business office so they may be entered into Munis. The fourth step is the grant award. The grant facilitator is expected to manage their grant with monthly check-ins with myself. Setting up the grant, setting up a grant budget and management system is required. The grant manager will initiate monthly check-ins with grant facilitators, set up required Munis training with all grant facilitators, and provide budget management system resources for their access. The fifth step is the grant management step. The grant facilitators are expected to run a monthly flex report to maintain good records of budget and spending. The grant facilitator may also be required to maintain pre and post-grant data as requested. The grant manager will create a shared spreadsheet for all grant facilitators to track monthly flex reports, budget, spending from monthly updates with the business office. So as mentioned before, this is all still a work in progress, and we are working hard every day to make sure that we are more accountable as a district for grant budget spending. Provided to you tonight was a spreadsheet put together by members of the grant committee to ensure that we are tracking our future grant funding and also following the procedures as required. In addition to that, we are also still researching more opportunities for future grant funding for our Brockton students. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Ms. Jackson at this time? I'll start with Mr. Sullivan, followed by Ms. Azak, please.
Congratulations, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
I was wondering, when you get a grant, when everything's been approved, you get the grant, how long do you have to spend it?
Depending on what grant we apply for, some grants will give you a year, so if it ends in a year, we have that year, that fiscal year to spend it. But some grants are gonna be consecutive year grants, so we do have grants that roll over from year to year, so it just depends on the grant that we will be applying for.
In other words, could some of them be two years or three years?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Thank you.
Very detailed, and this is what we need. We need a step-by-step, we need accountability. Couple of things, I like the list of the grants that we currently have. You have the dates, start date, end date. If it's not too much, could we get maybe a printout once a month?
Of course. I actually have plans on giving you, everybody on the school committee, frequent copies so we can all be updated, and everything is transparent in our process.
And that way, we can keep track of what grants we have and what's going on. So this helps us. This is huge. The other thing is, is as far as the, so this is a draft, as far as the grant overview.
Correct.
And like I said, it's broken down, and it's accountability.
Right.
So, I think that was it. I mean, I'm just, I'm impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So we didn't have anything like this before now?
I believe we had a grant manual many, many years ago, but again, we're gonna be working as a committee to improve and add to the grant manual for accountability, so.
Things change over the years.
Right.
It's time that we update it.
Right.
So, no, I thank you for updating that, and I know, I took a look at it. I was impressed, like I said, it's broken down. I don't think we're gonna run into issues like we did. Not that anything, you know, it's just, it's more transparency with us in, we have it. So I appreciate your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, please.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
We've already sat down, had a long conversation. I know when this, I mean, filling this position, I reached out to Dr. Cobbs, I said, "Dr. Cobbs, I have to meet this individual, I gotta feel comfortable." I love the energy and the productive conversation. I know the committee was gonna be impressed of, you know, obviously, you know, what we're dealing with and moving forward and changing how we have an oversight of the finance department, specifically with these grants when it's broken down. I know Dr. Cobbs and the leadership team working hard and making sure that every dollar is accounted for, as you indicated, you're gonna be on top of them, and I love that, and welcome, and we look forward to working with you, keeping us informed, and I know you're gonna be on top of everybody, making sure we ain't sending a penny back.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other, Ms. Oliver, please.
Welcome, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
This is a great work. This is exactly, just to piggyback on my colleagues, this is exactly what we wanted and expected, and I think you have a great team behind you
Thank you.
that is going to support you to get it done, so we don't basically send any money back and did the service to our kids moving forward. And I do like the fact that you're gonna give us a printout, so we are keeping track of exactly what the grant, when it's gonna end, how much money we have, and just basically have detailed what each, what the money's gonna go towards in that grant. That would be awesome, too, if we can have exactly what each penny's gonna be spent for those grants. That would be a great thing for us to have also in those grants detailed. I appreciate it.
Not a problem.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Any, Mr. Vega, please.
First off, it's exciting to have somebody who knows what they're talking about in the seat. It's exciting to see this expertise kind of like flowing through, like it's very, like, I think the city wins by, the district wins by having you in place. This report, the manual's fantastic.
Thank you.
It makes me a little greedy, though, because now I have questions about, so, you know, so as folks have said, in this report, we're getting a lot of detail. I wonder if in future reports, can we get the, you know, the current amount spent for each, and also, can we get more detail on what each grant is, what the purpose, the overall purpose is, and then details on how, you know, how each of these things is fulfilling that purpose, or matched up? That would be fantastic.
Sure.
And it's less about accountability and just more about us being able to celebrate, like, what we are doing with this grant funding, so, yeah, very excited to have you on board, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Gomes, I know you're remote, any questions, Claudio?
No, just wanted to say welcome. I am looking forward to the work that's gonna get done. This is something that we definitely need. I don't know if you'll be following, we're literally all over the place, so we definitely need some organization. I did go through the PDAW sent over, so far it's looking good, and I can wait to see what we're gonna accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Mrs. Sullivan, any questions or comments at this time? None, okay, great. I just want to welcome you, I want to thank you. This committee, actually, we took a vote when we were at the unknown school that we wanted to have regular updates relative to grants, so this is definitely checking that box. I think with the superintendent's report, an update every month, kind of like we did for the school safety update, we could put a standing every other month, or every month, one meeting per month, and invite you to come before us to maybe clarify and inform with Trish, but really excited, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Camilla. Okay, next on the agenda, we have, will be Trish Boyer to do a budget update, open architects. TJ Plant is not with us tonight, nor is CFO Troy Clarkson.
Just for the record, D under of the report, again, update from TJ Plant, as superintendent said, Mr. Plant was unable to join us, and he does apologize, we were on a Zoom with him today, myself, the vice chair, and superintendent, so at this time, also, Mr. Clarkson, E is unable to join us tonight. I do believe that we will probably have to call a special next week to finally, we have to take a vote at some point, number one, but it would be important to hear from TJ and Troy, and they weren't able to join us tonight. Patricia's here, and we welcome her at this time. Good evening, Trish.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to say welcome to Cam. She's a bundle of energy, very enthusiastic. She's only been here a month. She just hit her month anniversary. She's been doing great, so congratulations. So there are no updates in the FY25 budget process since last week's presentation. However, I had received questions from a few people asking me, what's the difference between net school spending and non-net school spending? So I tried to find a little blurb for you to just clarify that. And while there is no definition for non-net school spending anywhere to be found, there is a definition for net school spending in Mass. General Law, Chapter 70, Section 2. And it reads, "Net school spending is the total amount spent for the support of public education. However, that, that net school spending shall not include spending for school construction, long-term debt service, school meals, transportation of students, or adult and community learning programs." So that might help clear up some of the confusion with some people when we're talking about the budget between net school spending and non-net school spending, and the differences are why we need to keep them as separate line items in the budget. So I just wanted to give some.
Thank you, Trish. Trish, could you just pine to the school community members? So again, the vice chair, myself, you, Mr. Clarkson, Dr. Cobbs, the solicitor, and TJ and Troy were on a Zoom prepping for tomorrow. Again, just as a reminder, tomorrow's 22nd, we have our Zoom at 2:00 tomorrow with Lieutenant Governor Driscoll, Secretary Gorkowitz of A&amp;F, Sean Corona from DOR. They had asked us to meet on the 22nd, we'll do that tomorrow, we did a prep, we'll do some further conversations tomorrow. But one thing that was different from last week to this week was the community schools, you had indicated today that you believe this is gonna be a mechanism to bring some of those figures down. Could you just, could you share some of that information, because I thought that was important?
Right, absolutely. So in some of the transportation line items, we hope to work with some of the vendors, bringing the transportation costs down. In the community schools, we are hoping that a lot of the funding that they get, they get a lot of grants in partnerships with other, well, partnerships with other, other communities and such to organize programs. So while net school spending, we anticipate to be about 19.5, $19.5 million, we're hoping to make cost savings as much as we can to get those in line with what the city is looking towards.
That was the only difference from last weekend.
Yes.
We'll be ready to have the conversation as soon as we meet with the state tomorrow. You'll provide, myself, the vice chair, will provide updates to all the members as well. Any questions for Trish at this time? Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you, actually, thank you, Ms. Boyer. We touched base before the meeting, so I had asked if we could just, we're nearing the end of our fiscal year, to try to get anything that's outstanding, any invoices, so Trish is gonna work on that for us and try to get it. Like I said, sometimes some companies don't bill out monthly, and it's hard to tell from this itemization when the last bill was we got, so we just don't want any last-minute surprises, so thank you for taking that on, to just try to look into that for us. And then, am I jumping the gun, but can you explain the, or is this a separate item, Dr. Cobbs? The returned unexpended grant funds, are we gonna cover that, or?
Sure, so I hadn't anticipated covering that. So again, this is just the list that we are continuing on closing the grants from previous fiscal years. Again, a lot of, we don't have too many more grants left that we have to close, and a lot of them we are able to, even though they are in a deficit, we're able to move some expenditures around via journal entries and such, so that we don't have to cover the deficits and to use up any remaining funds. So again, we're just continuing to work on the grants as fast as we can.
So I don't have the paperwork from the last time that we voted on it, so is that 255-616? And then the additional $20,000, 989?
Yes.
Is that, so?
That's the next batch that she worked on.
That's the next batch, the $20,000, 989?
Yes.
Out of $3,253,000.
Okay. That, I just want a clarification, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Azak. Any other questions for Ms. Boyer at this time? Again, I will be working the vice chair to call a special next week. Now, Monday is the holiday, so the city council will not meet Monday, they'll meet on Tuesday, right? But we are allowed, it's exempt under the ordinance, we're allowed to meet same night as them, when they have a special. So we can meet next Tuesday if it's the will of the committee, or we can meet on Wednesday, so we can determine that prior to the end of tonight. But again, the whole purpose of that night would be to have Troy here in person, to have TJ via Zoom, and to have Trish, so we can just finally get this squared away. We're getting down to the end. The council president was also on the Zoom today, and again, Moses, in his capacity as president. It's the 17th of June, which is Monday, it's gonna be the first night where I'll present as mayor the budget order, and then the next night, Tuesday, the 18th, will be dedicated to the schools. And again, it would be really great if all eight of us can be there in person that night. They'll be asking questions of Dr. Cobbs and myself, and I suspect the vice chair as well. Any other questions at this time, or should we move on to the? Claudio, do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
No further question, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yeah, just one, the time and place for the special meeting, is it here?
It's gonna be here. Yeah, it's probably gonna be 7:00, Tony, you think, 7:00 next Tuesday? Yeah, be here.
Right here.
Yes. We'll have Zoom capability as well, Mr. Sullivan. Next agenda item, Dr. Cobbs, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The next agenda item is the DESI MOU with respect to the Mass. Core graduation requirements, and this will be a presentation from Principal McCaskill and the Brockton High School leadership team. And Deputy Walter.
They're coming. I just needed to remind you that tonight is not a vote night, and we are working with the Department of Education in terms of what we actually need to do in order to be prepared for a Mass. Core graduation requirement, looking at comparable urbans like Fall River that actually has it as a requirement, and how they are doing, what their data looks like, and what they had in place in order to move in that direction. So when you're listening to the team tonight, remember, it's just to hear them and to really consider what we need to do for Brockton High next year, and at what point is it appropriate to add this in as a graduation requirement.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Sullivan, Vice Chair Rodriguez, and members of the school committee, good evening. Tonight, we'll be doing our presentation regarding Mass. Core, and with me tonight, we have our Associate Principals of Academics, Ms. Jennifer Morgan and Ms. Rachel Umbriana. So without further ado, we'll start the presentation, starting with Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. McCaskill. Hit the next slide, because I don't have a clicker. Thank you so much. So Mass. Core is the state required, state recommended course of study for high school students. And it's recommended and developed to make sure that a student's coursework in high school aligns with the expectations of both college and the workforce. Now, the requirements for Mass. Core are listed up there, but it's really tiny type. So on the next slide, I gave you a comparison, thank you so much, of both our current graduation requirements and the graduation requirements for Mass. Core. So currently, our seniors have to complete 24 credits of English, 18 of math, 15 of science, 15 of history. There is not a world language requirement currently. Six credits of physical education and wellness, there is no current arts requirement, and 26 elective credits. The biggest difference between our current requirements and the Mass. Core requirements are those two places that we don't have any graduation requirements, the world language and the arts.
I'm flipping to the next slide. So what implications does this have on our current Brockton High School schedule? We currently have a six-period day, it can be challenging for students if they are involved in extracurriculars, if they're involved in the arts, music, languages as well, to fit all of those classes into a six-period day. We're also looking at our individualized student considerations. If you are a multilingual learner, let's say you're a multilingual learner with disabilities that needs academic support, or if you're a multilingual learner that is in our CTE program, say, that adds a few layers, a little bit of a complexity in there. And there's also staffing implications to this, and Principal McCaskill will speak to that in his slide. Tracking student progress, how is this monitored? So we talked, Ms. Morgan talked about the credits and kind of following what courses that you need. In our Infinite Campus app, the parent portal in the campus app, parents, teachers, and administration, guidance counselors will all be able to track student progress. The picture is small, but you can see it breaks down what the requirements are by content area, and it will tell you how many credits you've achieved and what else you need across your four years of high school. So it's, it's a nice overview for both parents and students to monitor their academic progress.
So one of the pieces that we have for recommendations for your consideration is a proposed schedule change that will not go into the 24-25 school year, but yet, school year 25-26. We're looking at staffing levels be maintained or increased over that time, and we need a year to plan this out, and feedback from all our stakeholders, from you, families as well, so they can get, however you can have an opportunity to roll this out. And as that last bullet indicates, we are proposing for a 25-26 implementation for the Mass. Core being part of our graduation requirements. And so at this time, we will entertain any questions.
Any, thank you very much, Principal. Any questions? Any questions? I'm going to start with Mr. Vega, followed by Mrs. Sullivan, please.
First off, this is, this is very exciting. And, you know, and I, and I think it, it brings into focus a couple of strengths. I noticed that, you know, currently not having an arts requirement in a, in a school that is known for the arts, it, you know, it has to be addressed. Furthermore, if we want to truly call ourselves a esteemed leader, right, that arts need, the arts need to be present in that, so that's really exciting. My question would be, what are, what are the major schedule changes that have to be considered in the plan you're proposing? And, and how will those schedule changes jive? If you're just starting with the ninth grade, how will that schedule jive with what I imagine will be the old schedule in 10th, 11th, and 12th?
So the schedule that's been proposed is currently under negotiations, so while I would love to give you details, I can't. But what I can say is that hopefully it will address some of the concerns we have with the tight fit of the need for multiple courses for our special, special interest groups. The second part of your question was?
Just specifically, like, knowing that the ninth grade will be moving at a different schedule from the rest of the school, how do you, how do you reconcile that?
Okay, so the schedule change is actually for the whole school, so that everybody changes at the same time. The graduation requirements would change for the ninth grade and progress on. So our current kids who are taking courses, we didn't feel it was fair to backtrack and say, oh, by the way, you need to take these extra courses now that they've already started on their path. But we would like to be able to get the information out there to students and parents ahead of time, so they'd know what those graduations requirements are going to be, so they can plan for them in the future.
As a follow-up, so, you know, in, in the, in the slide, you mentioned there'd be the need for an increase in, in faculty and staff. Do you have any idea or early feeling of like what disciplines will be the, the areas that need to be bolstered?
So I do know that there are some recommendations on the table for y'all this year for some staffing increases, and those were taking into consideration the thought of going towards Mass Corps. In addition, the areas that we don't currently have graduation requirements will definitely need to be looked at. Now luckily, when I pulled the numbers, if you look at our current arts program, almost 80% of our kids already taken art, right? So will there need to be a maintenance? Absolutely. We'll probably need an increase in that department, but it's not going to be astronomical, because we're well on our way there.
Mr. Sullivan, you have a follow-up question, or no? Oh, you're scratching your head? Ms. Oliver, followed by Mr. Sullivan.
We want to implement this starting in September for the new ninth graders, or next year?
The following year for 25, 26, for the incoming freshman class.
And we're going to get parents involved, like having, like, like a conference, or like, just like them involved, how the schedule's going to look like, how they're going to read the, the grades, the credits, so they make sure that their child is advancing in credits, having enough credits to graduate and advance to college.
Oh, absolutely. This could be in the form of town, town hall meetings, just for incoming freshman classes, you know, and freshman families, I should say. But it gives us, as we indicated in the presentation, it gives us a year to spread this out, to get this information out to all our stakeholders.
Even if we voted, I think it has to be voted by June? When do we have to vote?
You have to vote, but you can vote, you don't have to vote that it starts next year.
Okay. Okay, great. Just want to make sure that we give enough time for parents to digest all the information, get enough knowledge and learning, especially as students do, to get, you know, adjusted to the whole changes. A lot of, you know, freshmen, they're going to be like, what are you doing now? Like, all the changes, you know, try to get used to their schedules and how to read their schedules and credits. So I think starting in next year is, is a great idea.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yes, thank you. Nice presentation. I was just wondering, on the physical education as required by law, what, what is required by law?
So currently, the Mass Law states that a high school student must take at least one semester of gym every year and one term of health over the four years that they're in high school.
Thank you. One other quick question. Just an example, the English Language Arts is 24 credits, all four units. What's the difference between a credit and a unit?
So our current credit system is based on the number of seat hours and how long the course is. So for example, a full-year course that meets every day is six credits. So an English class that needs 24 would be four English classes. A unit, as defined by Mass Corps, is a year or its equivalent, basically it's a class. So as you can, it's not quite spelled out, but the four English classes that they already take meets the four units of Mass Corps requirement.
So in other words, there'd be no change at all?
There's no change at all to English. There really isn't, the only big changes are the introduction of world language and the requirement of art. And one more, well, not necessarily. But yes, so it's, it's just their definition of how they define, we define credits, six for a full-year course, three for a half-year course, and they define it as a unit, which is a course of study.
It does for five days a week, a unit?
Not necessarily. It's not about seat time, it's about getting through the curriculum for that course. So some courses take a year to get through their curriculum. Some take a semester.
Okay, thank you.
Before we go for a follow-up to Ms. Oliver, um...
Quick question. For students, there are, like I say, eighth graders taking language in middle school. How does that work moving forward into high school? Language.
I can speak to the language piece. The, so it doesn't count towards the high school graduation requirements, middle school. We offer middle school language because it propels the students into higher levels and more opportunity. The Spanish one, or Latin one, or Mandarin Chinese one is a full-year course, whereas our two, three, and four years are half-year, so they're able to progress higher and have more opportunity. So the middle school just serves as a repellent to a higher level, but it does not count towards high school graduation.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, please.
Thank you. What are we defining arts as? What are we considering? Because when I, when you say arts, I'm looking at music, I'm looking at carpentry, because I was involved, so I'm just assuming that it's going to fall in all that line.
Absolutely. So everything that could be considered an art, whether it's performance or production, visual, they're all considered art. The other thing that Mass Corps allows for is something that we haven't captured yet, which is the ability to use other things students are doing to account for those credits. So let's say, for example, a student is dedicatedly a member of the drama club and spends days and days and days working on building these sets. If we, as a school, can prove that they are fulfilling the requirements for, that are considered a course, they can get that one art credit for the after-school stuff they're doing. It doesn't necessarily have to be defined by the classroom. Similarly, in our world languages, if we can prove that a student is fluent in another language, the one that they are coming to us with, if they're bilingual or multilingual, then that can count as their world language requirement. And I think those are the things we haven't captured yet that we're looking to do now.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Gomes, remote, do you have any questions, Claudio?
No question. I already answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Azak, follow-up.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do like that we're giving our students and our families just a little bit of time to absorb this, and you just actually answered my question. I was going to ask about the world language. So do they have to speak the language and be able to write the language? Okay, so they have to be fully, fully fluent in that language? Is it their secondary language?
It's actually something that we already do. We have students that graduate, I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with the chords for the seal of illiteracy. They have to demonstrate a level of high proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking of the language. So it's more than just being able to speak a language, and we do all, we already capture that currently, so.
Okay. No, thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments at this time? Thank you very much. Truly appreciate it. Mr. Superintendent, are there any items to refer to subcommittee, to your knowledge?
I do not at this time, may I have any items for subcommittee?
Thank you, Dr. Cobb's. Any members, members, any items to refer to subcommittee at this time? Any topics that we needed to refer to subcommittee? Ms. Azak, anything?
Have we gotten clarification on out-of-state travel with our students as far as male, female chaperones? I know that that came up and it's, it's up here again, I believe, for the same, same group. I just, did anyone? Looking to our policy?
The, so if you notice in your, in your packet for the drone competition, we have adequate representation for chaperones, male and female. For the other, which was the, the other trip out of state was, there, there's no female participant, so we don't need a female chaperone for it.
Thank you, Ms. Azak.
We're covered.
We will now go on to Agenda 4. That concludes it. I'm sorry. Oh, hey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. So I, I think this might get referred to the policy subcommittee, but I'm wondering, in light of all the meetings that we have ahead of us, all the big decisions that need to be made, do we need to have a discussion about committee of, subcommittees, subcommittees of the whole versus a four-person subcommittee? It seems that if we could somehow transition away from subcommittees of the whole, we might be able to get more done.
I mean, we could put that on a special meeting next week. Attorney Spodeford wasn't able to join us this evening, and again, she'll be going on maternity leave real soon. We wish her all the best. Again, attorney, attorney Mello, Peter Mello, and attorney Breznerham will be helping out while she's away, but the vice chair and I will work to get the agenda. We could put that on the agenda, next week's meeting. Thank you. Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. I appreciate that, but we've gone over this so many times in the past, like, two years. We've spent so much time. If a member doesn't want to attend, they don't need to attend, as long as we have a quorum. So if someone doesn't want to attend, they don't have to attend. It's just, it's a subcommittee. We've gone over it.
Just, it's not on the agenda tonight?
Yeah, that's all.
So we shouldn't, we should not be discussing it tonight. But I'm happy to put it on the agenda. We could talk about it. I concur with you, it's been discussed ad nauseam, but I'll make sure it's an agenda item. We could discuss that next Tuesday. We'll continue now, Agenda 4, which is the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, E, and F. What's the will of the committee? Anybody want to take any out?
Before we get to that...
Mr. Vice Chair?
Um, I don't know, Mrs. Boyle is still here, I can't see, but do, do we, do we, should we have a bid? I mean, I know we're inching close, I mean, that's something that we have to address. I mean, where are we? Is there things that we have to approve, that we have to, you know, it's May, and usually it's around this time?
We got a 25 budget. I'm sure I hear what you're saying.
For FY '25, any service contracts and bid reviews and, all right, do we have a timeline with that, or is this something that we just have to work with? I know we're waiting on procurement on some issues.
Yeah, I think when Troy does his next presentation with, and TJ, we'll have more detail about the budget, and, and at some point, you have to vote on it, but before we go, before the city council, yeah.
Usually we have our, our bid review, the way we award bids, so I know some of them are expiring, we're kind of...
We don't have any bids out right now, do you view?
For service contracts, nothing, all of that's kosher, nothing.
We haven't, we haven't sent any RFPs out yet. We don't have a procurement officer, yeah.
All right. I mean, Trish, I don't know if you want to shine in on it, because I, we had a conversation, we have some, we're kind of like delayed, so like, we have to put these out, so.
Right.
We do, we need to renew a bunch of them, but there's no RFPs out yet for anything.
So what I've been telling everybody is that we can purchase supplies and services off of the state contract list. The state went out and did all the bidding for every municipality in Massachusetts. So while you have the choice of procuring services and supplies on your own, the state does that and creates a contract with certain vendors, with many vendors. So practically everything under the sun that we would need to purchase in a school department or municipality is probably already bid and available on a state contract. So I've been telling everybody that we're going to be half the purchasing, doing our purchasing off of the state contract list for most of next year.
Yeah, I know the, the state combine system, but I'm just saying, is there anything that's lingering that the school committee has to approve besides the state combines?
We have to put out an RFP for McKenty Vento. I mean, that was a legal opinion. What I will put on the agenda next week, I'll invite Mike Morris, Chief Procurement Officer, to come in for the city, and also Solicitor Bridges. We, we, by law, we have to put that out.
Yep.
But I know what you have said, Trish, go off the state bid list for the service supplies, so that we don't have to put that out to bid.
Right.
Yeah, that, that, that cuts a, I know there was, you know, last fiscal year, we, we had a dozen or so that was approved, and there was a few that was, you know, pulled off, so I, I just want to make sure that we don't tie our hands, that we're not getting certain services if we don't address that now.
That shouldn't happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Again, on the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, E, and F, are there any, what is the will of the committee? Anybody want to take them collectively, or do we want to take any out?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
That's a collective motion. Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. Before we take a vote, if I could just read them into the record. A is the approval of March 26, 2024, special school committee meeting minutes. B is the approval of March 19, 2024, regular school committee meeting minutes. C is the approval of March 5, 2024, regular school committee meeting minutes. D is the approval of out-of-state, empower yourself to Los Angeles, California. E is request for authorization to accept proposal expenditures of funds, improving ventilation and air quality in public school buildings grant $3,300, oh, wait, $869. There is no match on that, which is a good thing. DESI food and nutrition programs for the summer food service program grant the amount of $9,111. And then all, oh, sorry, $9,111. And then F is the acceptance of the human resources notifications, personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, retirements. So motion on the floor was properly seconded. I have to call the roll, because we have a member remote. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm a yes, that passes unanimously. We will now go on to Agenda 5, which is unfinished business, discussion and potential vote. We have three matters before us tonight. We have the facility moves, the resolution regarding dropout age. Vice Chair Rodriguez will talk about that. And then also the public hearing, FY 2025 school choice meeting, May 21, 24, which again happened at 6:45 tonight, this evening, prior to this meeting. The matters before us relative to facility moves, please. Members of the committee, Mr. Vega, please.
So I just want to start this off by saying, it's not my normal disposition to be difficult, and what I'm about to say in the comments I'm about to share are not meant to be anything other than helpful. At our May 7 meeting, I expressed concern about the way in which we were handling the approval of the plan to shift schools and programs to different locations. My concern was that by voting on the moves, one building at a time, rather than examining the plan as a whole, we risk painting ourselves into a corner where we'd be forced to make decisions based on what space was left, rather than what spaces are best for the programs and students. At the time, the only person who voiced agreement with my concern was Dr. Cobb's, so I assumed, as a new committee member, that I overlooked something obvious to others and voted accordingly. As I said last week, I regret that decision. At last week's meeting, we realized as a committee that we could not continue the process without first gaining a better understanding of enrollment numbers, as well as gathering more information regarding the flexibility we might gain from potential lease renewals and/or new acquisitions. Now, it stands to reason that if we felt we didn't have enough data to make an informed decision last week, we certainly didn't have enough data to do so on May 7. So with that said, I'd like to move to rescind all motions that the group adopted at the May 7 meeting regarding facility changes.
Mr. Vega, I respectfully appreciate your, your ideas, but under Robert's rules, we're unable to do that. Robert's rules specifically says that the prevailing party, which in this case you voted with the prevailing side, needs to be made at the same meeting for reconsideration. with the prevailing side, needs to be made at the same meeting for reconsideration. Although if there's a local rule, like the Brockton City Council has a local rule which supersedes Robert's rules, which says anybody that wants to reconsider it, rescind it, has 48 hours from the vote to go to the city clerk's office. It's not my understanding that the school committee has that same, same rule, so I don't believe that your, your motion will be proper under Robert's rules. I don't, I don't think it is. Attorney Spodefield is not here to confirm it. If I'm wrong, I'm happy to put that on the agenda next, next Tuesday, but I don't believe I'm wrong on that.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that my comments just gone on record. You know, I, I can't stress this enough, people are asking questions. They're asking us how we make our decisions. And if our, you know, and if our method of making decisions is unanimously voting time after time, that's not a process that our kids deserve. We're here to make difficult decisions. That may mean we don't necessarily agree with a plan that comes forward, but we have to have the information in front of us. That's all I'll say on the matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Any other comments or questions at this time, either those that are in attendance here or Mr. Gomes, that's remote? Will of the committee?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Anything relative to this matter, facility moves? Ms. Azak, please.
Sure. I had a chance to talk to one of the cabinet members, and I was just, you know, it's, we have to, when I look at building moves, I look at the amount of students, the size of the building, and what, what we can expect. And when I had mentioned, if we were to move the Promise that we had voted on to the Huntington, that building is, it's a huge building. And if there's ways, because when we had the, and I know I always mess this up, sometimes I call it the old Huntington. It's actually the old, our known, the Keith School, that now is where the safety building is. They had multiple programs there, and I asked, how did you get multiple programs under one roof? And we didn't have issues. And they said, there were different schools, but at that same building. So one recommendation was, is maybe move the BVLA to the second floor of the Huntington. And that, that to me makes sense, because we don't have a small number of students taking up a building that, that can hold 500. So I would like to see if we can maybe put that recommendation in. That might free up some space at another location for another program. But I know if we could have the BVLA, second floor, and then that would be the BVLA program, and then you have the Promise program, but they're all at the Huntington building. So you have two different schools under the same, they can have different entrances, there's multiple entrances to that building. But I wasn't sure if that would be something that the other members would be open to, discussing, but it's a large space. I'm in the Huntington all the time. That's a large space for a small number of students. So I, that would make, be one of my recommendations. If, if we can entertain that, that would be one program that we can actually have them there. And that gives them enough space.
Ms. Azak, I appreciate that. I also want to thank Dr. Cobb's and the cabinet. They spent hours and hours and hours on this, doing due diligence. So I, I can't opine on that. Dr. Cobb's, you have any thoughts on that?
Yes, actually, two things. One is that, you know, the, the Huntington building, we, we chose that building for Promise because it, it only has two grades right now, ninth and 10th, and it will continue to grow until it's a full high school, ninth through 12th. So at some point, we anticipate 400 to 500 students there. So it, it's small now, but it will grow. But it, to, to your point, though, it, it's still a large building. I, I think it can accommodate both programs, the BVLA and Huntington, the Promise School, Huntington Building.
So, Dr. Cobb's?
I would, I would agree with your recommendation.
So not to put you on the, it's going to be years down the road to grow the Promise program?
There'll be another 50, 60 students next year, so it, it's only going to be two years before that.
Okay.
But it can accommodate both programs, yes.
And I'm just thinking, we'll be in a different situation in a couple of years, or even a year from now, we'll be in a different situation to be able to really, I, I don't want to keep moving our students around.
Exactly.
But right now, we, we really don't have a choice, given what we're going through. We, we were, we have to make, make room. And so there's that one, and then I had another recommendation.
Just before you finish on, on that promise, so just understand that the enrollment to the Promise each year has been limited by the size of the building that they're in. We, you know, we could only take 50 or 60 students. We could potentially take 100 students for the next freshman class next year, and 100 more students for the following freshman class. So it's been limited by the size of the building that we've had them in.
So with the BVLA, it's mostly the teachers that are there?
Right. And then, but we will have students in the building when we do the MCAS testing, so, which will facilitate absolutely classroom for them to test in, so, yeah. Mostly the teachers and the administrative staff will be there.
Ms. Azak, I think you had another comment you said?
And, and the other, the other, so I know many of us have been to the different locations, and we were going to put an RFP out for the Belmont Street location, if we could just buy ourselves a year to just see what's going to happen. I just think we have so many moves in a short period of time, and it's just, and we just, I know it's all in-house, but that's just, it's a lot of moves. So I, I wasn't sure where we were with the RFP, so that could be a totally different topic. But as far as, I know we recommended having the reengagement stay there, because the reengagement, we all get the confidential calls. I don't get anything for the reengagement. They're good. They, they have their own location, everything, you know, they're doing fine there, and that's why to put the reengagement with the, I think it was, they were, they were talking about bringing like the middle schoolers, or mixing them with another program. I just, I, certain programs, they do well if we just leave them at their locations temporarily. If anyone wants to chime in on that, but it just.
The, the only thing I'd be concerned about is, I mean, if we, if we figure out the facilities, but we in essence kind of pause the students that are currently on Belmont Street at the Connie property, and by law, we have to put it out, right? So, and the off chance that, let's just say, they didn't bid on it, right? Where do we, where do we put those kids? I, I just don't know. I don't have that knowledge. But, Dr. Cobb's, would there be the ability to, for us, a committee, to formulate a vote on everything except for that? And then if, if we put it, we have to put it out. If that came to fruition and we're able to keep them there, great. But if not, what will we do with all those kids and staff?
Well, you're right, man. They have to go somewhere. And that's why we, we, again, we, we discuss this at length at the cabinet meetings, and we feel that having them at Summer Street with the therapeutic day school is the right place for them. You know, just realistically, this, this has to go before the City Council, because it's a, it's a real estate transaction. So it, not only do we have to put out the RFP, which will, by, it usually takes a month to be published, it has to be out for a month.
Published, yep.
Then it closes, and we do the bid review, and we, then we start, once you have a bidder, that's a successful bidder, like you said, we may not. We may have a different successful bidder, and then, and either way, they're going to have to move. So we don't know what that's going to entail. And then we go into negotiations between the, the owner and our, with our legal team to get, work out a lease and a contract. So we could well be into September before, you know, we have a lease and a place and decide what's going to happen. And that certainly affects our staffing, because we have to notify, you know, by our contract, the professionals and the BEA members and others that, that are in that building.
And also point of information, many of the people that have been on the school committee for a while know this, but some of the new, new members maybe not, under the ordinances, the City Council has summer session start in June. So June, July, and August, they're in summer session. They do not meet every first and third Monday as a FENCOM, and every second, fourth, there's a full City Council. They only meet one FENCOM, one City Council, June, July, and August. So again, our friend, the president could call a special if need be, but it does limit the amount of time.
Just a question, you've been on the, on the City Council, is there, how many readings do they have to take before they make a vote on, a final vote?
For a lease, it would be, it would be read and referred from full council back to finance, favorable out of finance, back to a final vote. There'd be three different meetings.
Three.
Unless they suspended the rules, but I don't think that they would. I haven't seen that.
I don't think so. Thank you.
So I met with a few people, and even though they have 92 students, they have the morning session and the afternoon session. Now, when I sit here and I make a vote, I'm not in that environment every day. I look to them for their expertise, and it was not recommended that we put them with another program. So that's how I base my votes, is our teachers, our staff, and the program directors are in that environment. I'm not trying to be difficult, but they're in that environment. So I take their advice as a recommendation when I come to the table. Where they have the morning sessions and the afternoon sessions, and where it's, again, they're split twice, you know, morning and afternoon. I mean, if, if there was another location that would fit their needs, it's just, it wasn't recommended to put them with another program. They excel where they are, and, and, you know, on their own. So I, I'm just going by the recommendations that were given to me.
Well, and I'm going by the recommendations of my experienced administrators and the cabinet members, working with the school principals and the staff. Everybody has an opinion, everybody has their thoughts on things, but.
Well, this is coming from the staff.
This wasn't a have, have, have a decision that we made. And to answer your question, no, we don't have another place to put them.
Thank you.
Other members of the committee, any comments or thoughts at this time? Mrs. Sullivan, please.
I'd just like to thank the cabinet and Dr. Cobb's for all their hard work. They're, they know the numbers, they know the programs that these kids need. They know these kids, and I'd just like to really thank them, because I know they worked very hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Any other members? Mr. Vega, follow up, please.
I, I also appreciate the work that Dr. Cobb's and the cabinet have done. You know, it's important to, you know, to note that this body's role is to ask questions. This body's role is to address items that might affect policy or budget, right? So, you know, when we think about moving programs, and specifically, this is a budget question, when we talk about moving the ALC, knowing that they have a pre-K in existence, and that that pre-K is the key to their family programming grant funding, when we talk about separating the pre-K in another building, that, that was the discussion last week.
Well, not, not my recommendation, but it was a discussion, yes, you're right.
Yeah, oh, so, so when we talk about these things, it's clear that we don't all know about that grant. That's not something that was included in the information packet that we received. So again, and respectfully, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm holding the, the nerd book that you guys gave us, and I don't see any mention of a 48-hour.
The 48-hour, no, no, the Robert's rules, you misunderstood me.
Okay.
48 hours, the City Council has a local policy that they adopted. I don't believe this committee has a local policy. I have not seen the school committee having that local policy. So under Robert's rules, under strict reading of Robert's rules, you have to make a motion that night of the vote. That didn't happen, did not happen that night.
I, I'm not finding that either. I just, I've not seen any time lapse, okay.
It's in there. You can get, you can, we can get a legal opinion in it, but it's in there.
All right.
And it has to be the prevailing party, which you were, we all were, because it was unanimous vote, but it would have to happen the same night, which was, what, May 7?
Yeah.
But again, why don't we have Sarah or Attorney Mello?
Right.
Appear before us next week. What is the will of the committee at this time, please? Any other comments or questions at this time? Ms. Oliver, please.
I just have a comment. I think as a, a new member, I know your frustration, where you're coming from, to just been thrown into this with the, like, the lot of moving, and I think a lot of the movement has been happening for years. And I think with the budget crisis that we've been basically been facing, and we have to make moves, and, and we have to take into consideration not only the students, also the other programs, and I know a lot of people are upset, and whatever moves we're going to make, some people are going to be upset. And I've been to a lot of these buildings, I've talked to people, I've got emails, and I feel their pain, I feel their frustrations. No matter what I do, at the bottom of my heart, I know people are going to be upset. At the end of the day, my job as a school committee member is to do what's best for the students of Brockton, and I know that a lot of these programs do incredible jobs for the residents and their family. But I know the frustration that you're feeling, because I felt it when we first got the recommendation for movements, and I, at first, didn't know what I was going to do, because I was angry that we had to move this whole thing over again, and I had to sit back, breathe, and just focus what my job is, and why I was put here, and who I have to represent. But it takes a lot of work and a lot of self-reflection of what I'm doing and who I'm going to hurt at the end. And as a, as a mom, as a Brocktonian, I, I know the pain that we're going to cause no matter what we do and what we move. And I, I feel, I feel your frustration, because I was frustrated at the beginning, and I know that we have to make movement, whether we like it or not. So I get it. So we just got to make movement, and I know some people are not going to like it, and some wills. And I, I'm trying to work with everybody, but some people will be, have to get moved.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Any Vice Chair, please?
Thank you. It, I mean, it's, we have a decision to make, and we have to make that tonight. Dr. Cobb's and his team has to know what's going on, because there's a, you know, they have a lot of work, and it's kind of delayed. I, my opinion, I, and this has been going on for a while, is that, that the, the school district, the school committee, for years have approved programs without, you know, having space for these programs to grow. And that was one of the things that the, the committee at the time didn't ask questions, where are we going to put these individuals? You cannot double up, triple up, quadruple up programs on top of each other, and having one floor to one floor to one floor, that's not feasible. It, it, it doesn't work. And, you know, I think moving forward any programs that the district is trying to grow or implement, that has to be one of the mechanisms of, do we have the space? And we do not have the space, and we know we need space. And what does that space look like? And I think the, you know, with Dr. Cobb's and his team is, you know, we have to come up with a plan, long-term, of how much space do we actually need, and, and, you know, present that to the city, is, you know, we, our enrollment, we can see that from the email that we received from our CSAP of the enrollment, that's increasing. It's just going to keep increasing. It's not going to decrease, it's a good sign. But at the end of the day, we, we have a lot of children coming into the district. We're not going to make everyone happy, and we just have to live with it. It's the same thing as, you know, last year when we, we voted. Not, I was, I was unhappy, and Mrs. Azak was, but that's what the vote of the committee was, and we just have to live with it and assess it when that time comes. So I, I know some of them, you know, some of these buildings, we don't have cafeterias, we don't have a gym. And when you look at, you know, when you say a school, those are two components that you need. And we have to do what we have to do to make it work. So we just have to, you know, make those, those changes and those moves tonight. I had a long conversation with Dr. Cobb's this, this morning, and Deputy Walder, on those moves. And it's up to this committee. Some of us are going to be happy, some of us are going to be unhappy, but we have to make those, because we're, at the end of May, and the, the Dr. Cobb's and his team, leadership team, have a lot of work ahead of them. It's, they, they work diligently and very hard, putting in long hours to make sure that the, this district is still running, as Mrs. Deputy Walder said today, is, we had all this stuff going, but the district still kept moving. So we, we have to keep moving.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Follow-up by Mr. Vega, please.
I just want to qualify it. You know, I, I have no problems having an idea that I put on the table, not making it out there. This isn't about me being happy or sad. This is about me saying out loud that we are entering into a situation where we haven't had enough inquiry time, and where we haven't had enough information given. So, so this isn't about happy or sad. Our job is to have information. Our job is to make informed decisions. Nobody here can tell me that we had all the data and information that we needed on May 7, when we made that decision. You know, so I understand we're going to move on, but it's not our job to just move ahead. It's our job to move ahead informed. So with that said, I really hope that next year, if we're going to have a facilities conversation, it can't happen in May. It can't happen in April. It needs to start in the middle of the year, it needs to be intentional and strategic, and we need to have a lengthy period of time where we can inquire, ask hard questions, get good answers from experts like the cabinet. But our job is to set policy and budget, and this facility move affects both. but our job is to set policy and budget, and this facility move affects both. So, I want to move forward, but I just want to be clear, it's not about being angry or sad. It's about doing our job, and I've served on several boards, and I've never been a part of such a major decision being made with so little inquiry and incomplete data.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. Any other follow-up?
If I may. Sure, Dr. Cobb. I appreciate your standing, Mr. Vega, because you got thrown into this way late in the process, but we didn't start this process in May. We've been working on this process since November and keeping some of the members apprised of it. And, yeah, it's a difficult decision for everybody, and you're right, it's not about happy or sad or whatever else. It's about the right decisions right now and for the next three to five years, the students, the programs to grow and for the programs to be able to thrive in their new locations, and we have to move them. There's no question about that. And I want to thank all of you, school committee members, for your comments regarding the work that the Cabinet has done, my team has done, because it's been an incredible amount of work, and I would just end with saying, trust your administrators. We know what we're doing.
Mrs. Sullivan.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Vega, that any time that you don't feel like you have enough information, you can get in contact with any of the Cabinet, Dr. Cobb's, and they can make you feel more comfortable because they're always here to answer our questions, and we can do, we don't have to get them all answered at a meeting. We can meet with them during the week. They're open to meeting with us and answering any of our questions. So, just wanted to let you know that they're always available to you.
Before we go to Ms. Vega, did you have a follow-up? I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan, and then I'll go back to Mr. Vega.
I wanted to make a motion.
Hold the motion for a second, please. Mr. Vega, please.
I'll keep this brief, and that's just to say, I've appreciated getting information from Dr. Cobb's, from other members of the committee. I do know that we can do that, but we also are charged with publicly having these conversations and publicly sharing the information that we learn. So, while the conversations may have been going on for several months, I've been in the audience for several months, and I haven't heard it publicly discussed to the degree that one would need to make a decision. So, I agree with you, Ms. Sullivan, like, I know I can get that information, but how does the public get that information? How do our constituents get that information if it's not talked about here in detail?
Mr. Gomes, did you have any questions? I know Mr. Sullivan wants to make a motion, but did you have any comments or questions at this time, sir?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Before you make the motion, Ms. Azak.
Thank you. Dr. Cobb, can you just clarify? The committee wasn't working on this since November. The Cabinet had started working on it in November. So, we hadn't been working on it. I mean, I agree with you. We need to spend more time, we need to see, be able to go back and forth and brainstorm and see what options. That's what we're here for. But just so this clarification, we haven't been working on it since November.
You're right, thank you. I didn't say the school committee has been working on it.
I mean, we appreciate everything the Cabinet is doing. It's not an easy position that we're all in, so we do appreciate that, but we just started working on this not too long ago, trying to...
Well, we finally gave you the proposal, but we've been working on it all school year, essentially.
So, maybe moving forward, it might be good if we just start a little earlier. That way, we can...
Well, hopefully, we don't have to do this next year. We're not looking at moving more schools.
I don't know, Dr. Cobb, it seems like...
We will be talking to you next year, like I mentioned before, about moving programs because overcrowding and, again, for programmatic issues as far as vertic articulation and those sorts of things, but we're not moving any more schools.
Okay. No, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for Mr. Vega, that's all.
Again, if we could just have Dr. Cobb clarify, there's only three, really, three matters, right? It's the Jones Building, right? There's the Payne, the old Payne, and then there's the Green Building here at Brockton High, correct?
Okay, so...
Could you just clarify, because the BVLA that Joyce had made...
For your motion, Mrs. Sullivan, so the move would be for the Therapeutic Day School to go to the Jones Building, also for the Re-Engagement Center to go to the Jones Building, for the Edison Day Program to go to the Payne Building, Adult Learning Center, and for the BVLA to go to Huntington School. Those are pretty much the last moves. Did I get them all, Sharon? Sharon? I think that's all of them, just four more, essentially. So, the change to the proposal that we gave you was the BVLA to go to Huntington and not go to the Payne Building right now.
Ms. Azak, before we go to Mr. Sullivan on a total, is that a motion you want to make because that was your proposition, BVLA?
To move, well, my recommendation would be the BVLA...
To go to Huntington.
To the Huntington.
Right, that was a change, I added that in.
But I don't feel comfortable voting on all of these, all the moves all at one time. I don't agree with them, I'm sorry.
No, what I'm saying is, if you wanted to make a motion relative to the BVLA that you discussed tonight...
Okay, sure.
That sounded like was approved already by Dr. Cobb.
If Dr. Cobb's and the Cabinet, I mean, this came from recommendations, like I said, I go right to the source and just ask them. They're in that day-to-day.
What time is that?
Okay, that's fine. So, a motion to move the BVLA to the second floor of the Huntington Building.
You'd have to say second floor, just to the Huntington.
Yep. Motion to move the BVLA to the second floor of the Huntington Building on the library side, is what it says on here, so...
Okay, that's fine.
It's a form of a motion. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second was made by the Vice Chair. I do have to read the roll because we have a remote member.
Was they already going to the Huntington? The BVLA was already...
Just point of clarification on that, Mrs. Sullivan.
The Virtual Learning School, we had initially proposed it to go to the Payne Building, to the Adult Learning Center with the Edison Day, but now with Joyce's recommendation and talking with the Cabinet, we agree that it can move...
So, the Cabinet, and you agree to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So, it's a motion on the floor, properly seconded, where the BVLA will, for the next academic year, will go to the Huntington School, was properly seconded. Who seconded it? Vice Chair seconded it. Read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Claudia, what's your vote?
For BVLA?
Yeah, to go to BVLA, to put it to Huntington? Okay, your vote is no, Mr. Vega?
No.
Your vote is no, Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so that does prevail. So, BVLA has been approved by this committee, 6 to 2 vote to go to the Huntington. What is the matter before us now? Mr. Sullivan, did you have another motion or no?
Yes, I did.
It's a form of your motion.
I just wanted to explain one thing first.
Okay, on the, okay, you haven't made a motion yet, so go ahead, the floor is yours.
I had talked about this at another previous meeting, that Dr. Cobb and the Cabinet had worked hours and hours on this proposal. It was up to us that we would go with their recommendation. We trusted them for that. Part of it was, we were going to hold Dr. Cobb, that would be no more moves for three to five years. My motion would be to accept, except for the BVLA, except for it's already been done.
I'm sorry. Can BCA not hear?
Got to talk closer to the mic.
Okay. Timmy, just have to bring the mic a little closer, please, I'm sorry.
There you go.
Do you need the whole thing again?
No, you can just do the motion if you choose. Well, you can do whatever you want, you're a member of the committee.
All right, I'll start at the beginning. We had this meeting, I'm going to say a month ago, a month and a half ago, and I thought Dr. Cobb's and the Cabinet did a wonderful job of putting this package together. He had said at that time that there'd be no more moves for three to five years because there was people talking, that every single year, we're moving students from place to place, and he promised it would never, never happen again. My motion is to accept this proposal with the exception of the BVLA motion that Joyce just made, to accept as handed to us tonight.
And could you just define it per building, just for the record?
You want me to tell you, Tim, do you want me to do it for you?
Yeah.
So, again, the moves would be, we've already approved the BLA, BVLA, so there's three moves. The Jones and the Re-Engagement Center, I'm sorry, the Therapeutic Day and the Re-Engagement Center to the Jones Building, and the Edison Day to the Payne Adult Learning Center Building.
Perfect. That is my motion.
Just a clarification, that's the moves that we already...
That's correct.
Second.
That we recommended, yes.
Second.
Okay, wait a minute, second, I'm straining that down, I'm sorry. Okay, there's a motion on the floor where it was properly seconded, it was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan, where the Therapeutic Day School would go to the Jones Building, the Engagement Center would go to the Jones Building, and then the Edison Day would go to the Payne, also known as the Adult Learning Center. It's the form of the motion. I need to read the roll. Any comments on the motion? I need to read the roll at this time because we have a remote member. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
No.
Mr. Vega?
No.
Ms. Oliver?
No.
Vice Chair?
No.
Ms. Azak?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I was going to vote yes, but it fails, so. It does fail 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. 5 to 3 failure on that, so that motion does not prevail. What is the will of the committee at this time? There is no motion, there is no matter before us at this time. If there is none, we will put this, the Vice Chair and I will put this on the agenda for next Tuesday's Special School Committee Meeting. Ms. Oliver, please.
I still motion to put the RFP for the Belmont.
Well, we have to do that. I mean, that was a vote we already took, so yes, yes. We had that discussion today as well.
I would wait for that so the re-engagement can stay there.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly, not guaranteed. So, point of information, the RFP has to go out for that, the RFP has to go out for transportation. We took that vote a long time ago, and it has to by law, so...
Just a question.
Dr. Cobb's, please.
So, if you take out the move right now for the Re-Engagement Center, is there a will to vote on the other two moves, the Edison Day and the Therapeutic Day School?
Members of the committee, Vice Chair, there was just a question by Dr. Cobb. If the Engagement Center matter is tabled for now, is held in abeyance, is there a will of the committee to take a vote relative to the Jones Building and the Payne Building? Is that the question you asked, Dr. Cobb?
Yes. We send Edison Day back to Jones?
I'm sorry?
Edison Day back to Jones? If we're removing the, if we're going to look for the, we're going to put out the RFP and postpone that vote, I would make a motion to send Edison back to Summer Street and Brockton Therapeutic to Payne.
Is that the form of a motion? Mr. Gomes, is that the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, just on the motion, I just want to caution all of us again, I concur with what Anna said, putting an RFP out, but there is, I don't know how likely or unlikely it is, but the RFP going out in the street, we will be, in essence, kind of holding the Engagement Center in abeyance, and it does kind of put us in a precarious spot, but as long as all of us go in with wide eyes open, then it is what it is. There is a motion, is there a second on that motion?
Can I just...
On the motion, Dr. Cobb's, please.
So, I'd just like to add, if you vote to put the Therapeutic Day School at the Payne Building, DESI may not approve it, and it may, the result may be, if it's not approved, we have to either dissolve the Therapeutic Day School or send the students out of district to understand the consequences of that.
So, before we take that, Ms. Oliver, there's no second yet, so...
Why wouldn't they approve it? What is the reason?
Because they have to approve the building, that the Therapeutic Day Program is a specialized program, and they have oversight over those type of programs, and I believe in your packet, Deputy Walder put in the requirements for the therapeutic programs. It may not meet it, so we may end up, if we keep it there, like I said, two things may happen. We have to dissolve it, or we have to send more students out of district.
Which would cost us more money. I would humbly ask this of the committee, again, we're going to be meeting a week from now, 7 o'clock here, specials, I'm going to call a special with the Vice Chair. It would give Dr. Cobb's and his Cabinet enough time between now and next week to get an answer from DESI, because the worst thing we could do is take a formal vote, lawful vote, and then all of a sudden, DESI comes back, and we're going to be meeting with the state folks tomorrow, we'll look like fools. So, I think we would need to get a true opinion from DESI on if they would approve that location. If they would, there's a motion, and Mr. Gomes, you could make it again next Tuesday. If they disapprove it, then we have to put our thinking caps back on. Mr. Vice Chair, please.
Regardless of wherever the will of the committee is to move the therapeutic, DESI still has to approve it. Nothing's in stone that they're going to approve the Jones Building. I just think that this should have been moved a lot quicker than where it was, and if we planned on moving the therapeutic where we knew we had to, there should have been a deeper conversation with DESI ahead of time of this body taking a vote that these locations are approved by DESI to move the therapeutic. And I do believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that they can allow, give us a waiver, just as they did with moving them out of the Huntington to the Westgate location. So, that's concrete. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Dr. Cobb, any thoughts on that?
Do you want to opine on that?
Stepping around the seat, I'm sorry. Mr. Vice Chair, could I just ask you to repeat the question?
Regardless of where we send a therapeutic, DESI still has to approve that location.
That is correct.
So, there's nothing set in stone that the Summer Street location is going to be approved for a therapeutic school?
The Summer Street location has infrastructure within the facility that increases the likelihood of approval.
What's that infrastructure?
Gymnasium. Facilities for therapeutic support. The rooms are smaller, sort of lending themselves to all their class sizes, the availability of two cafeterias. So, as we work to bring back our elementary age population into that, sort of make it sort of a second to 12th grade school, the availability of space there increases the likelihood of approval. The move that we made this year, DESI agreed to give us a year to find a more suitable location, and I think Deputy Walder included in the packet, my understanding, is the criteria that they will examine. And so, in preliminary discussions with DESI about the move, they have been agreeable, and the feedback had been, that sounds like a great space for that program. I have not looked with the same lens at the other location, to be fair. So, that was the one space that we were thoughtful of. So, while, to your point, nothing is set in stone, that is correct.
Okay. So, like I said earlier, we don't have enough space. We have a building that where we're going to put students without a cafeteria origin, so how do you pick and choose who gets a gym and who doesn't? So, that's where I'm trying to absorb in, like, you're going to allow, they all need a gym, we understand, they all need a cafeteria, they need a space for exercise, they need all that. So, how do you pick one over the other that your program or this program is more suitable for you to have a gym, but you guys are not able to have that?
I don't envy your decision, okay? Let me be clear about that. What I will say is, the approval process for a special education day school is very specific. So, I'm not suggesting one is more important than another, I would never do that as both of those programs broadly fall under my umbrella. What I would say to you is, the approval process for location is not the same for the Edison Day Program than it is for the Therapeutic Day School, which is an approved day program of DESI to house students with disabilities and provide therapeutic and academic support programs to some of our most at-risk kids.
So, when we voted, when the committee voted last year to move the therapeutic to Westgate, that property there, was there an approval prior to moving, from DESI, prior or after? So, if we move therapeutic to the district as DESI, can we place them at this location, or did we just move them and then get the approval from DESI?
We did not have DESI approval for the move.
So, we just moved them without DESI's approval? But then after we moved them, DESI came in and said, okay, we'll give you guys a one-year waiver to find something else?
I think they watch our meetings, and so...
Everybody watches.
Yes, they do. So, my understanding from the dialogue I had with our partners in the Special Education Office was what they heard was a one-year move to find a more appropriate location for the program, whether that was renovation and redesign of the Huntington Building or another location within the city, right? So, in their brain, you had a year, that's fair, we'll give you a year.
Okay. So, how soon can DESI approve any of these changes with Jones or the Payne Street location, Payne School? Like, how quickly can they move? Is this something that somebody, a team, that's going to come in, or do they just give you a list and you just check off, here you go, this is what we have, and does that get approved that way? How does that approval process work?
So, we have an application that we have to complete that has a whole series of documentation that needs to be submitted, and then there'll be a site visit. We have not gone down that road because the volume of work necessary to complete that application, I need to know where they're going before I can complete the application. Does that make sense? So, I didn't want to give them two and then say, you come and tell us. Like, we were really thinking about, once this vote was taken, that would then allow us to proceed with the proper steps to seek approval. So, up to this point, we've not submitted anything because I didn't know where to create the packet of information to say that they'd be located, because the Payne Building and the Jones Building are significantly different setups, they are significantly different layouts, and the packet would look quite different depending on where they landed, or for that matter, back to the Huntington, right? So, like, it depended on where the committee, the final vote was to place the program. The conversations with DESI is, that I have had anyway, is there are very... program. The conversations with DSC is, that I have had anyway, is they're very aware of the space challenges and are going to hopefully turn it around as quickly as possible for us. I've received nothing but partnership from them, so I've not received any challenges or issues. They're very supportive and saying to me, you know, we trust you, you let us know when you're ready and we'll turn it around for you as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just, Jamie, just a quick question. You had said that you hadn't looked at the both buildings in the same lens. Would it be possible if we didn't take a vote tonight, if the committee as a whole decided to just halt it for one week, would you be able to look at the Payne School in that capacity and report back?
Certainly.
Does that sound positive, members of the committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make just, you know, one recommendation.
On the motion, yep.
On the motion, it's, Dr. Lobe, why is it gonna, you know, vet this out? If, when it comes to that point, if long as we don't meet as a quorum, you know, to accompany you if DSC's gonna come out to, so before we get to this meeting and then we're grappling, like, some of those questions and, you know, making the committee more comfortable, because you can see the committee's not comfortable with some of these moves, that a lot of those questions will be answered at that location of, how do you plan on addressing this, so we can just move, you know, a lot, you know, smoother, like, you know, I think if we had, you know, specifically for the therapeutic, where I say, it's a major asset, and I've had conversations with, how can we grow our, not grow, but make it a lot better, where we can bring our out-of-district students, so we can have a sustainable therapeutic school, how does that work and how does, you know, that gonna feel? But I think if we had that information of, listen, we're looking at this school, like, what do we have to do? I mean, obviously, it's gonna, all of our buildings need work, we understand that. But if we have that information and DSC's approval, like, this, here's your schools that we already identified, and I know you don't want to, it doesn't make sense going to do all this legwork when you know it's not gonna go nowhere, but I think at this point where we, that was one of our main components of a change, that if we had that information, to echo off of Representative Vega, getting a lot more data ahead of time, so we do make a wise decision on what the moves are gonna be, because it is gonna affect a lot of people.
Sure. So what I will endeavor to do ahead of the next committee meeting is to reach out to our DSC partners, identify the office which has ultimate approval over the determination of the space, and arrange a site visit for them to come. I'll let Dr. Cobb's and Deputy Wolder know when that occurs, committee members, as long as they're not in quorum, are welcome to attend, to sort of hear the feedback and sort of walk to spaces with us and our DSC partners, and hopefully that will be illustrative relative to sort of what we've articulated tonight, and give the committee more information relative to a level of comfort with that, with the decision to be made. So that's, I think, reasonable, and I will endeavor to do that first thing tomorrow morning.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair, thank you, Jamie. Ms. Azak?
Not to throw my key wrench into things, but I.
On the motion, I'm sorry.
On that motion. The Brockton Virtual Learning, I figured we had, we were voting on everything, so that's why I made that recommendation after talking to some cabinet members and some staff. Should I redact that and then leave that on the table so we can, we know these are the programs, because let's leave the second floor, maybe another program can go into the second floor at the Huntington, or is that gonna just, where are we looking at things, I mean?
I thought the only thing we were really looking at is if therapeutic was gonna go to the Payne School and if the Edison was going to the Jones, and the engagement, we're still trying to, that's kind of the missing link there, right? We have to work on an RFP. But you made that motion, it passed, if you want to rescind it, we're still in the same meeting.
Thank you, because I'm looking at just the number of students affected, that's why. I'm just, I'm looking at that, I mean, we can leave that, I just, okay, then we'll leave it, we'll leave it. I just, I want to make sure that, again, these are very difficult moves, we're not gonna please everybody, I get it, I can hear the audience, I mean, but our phone is blowing up, everybody wants certain locations and there's nothing we can do. We're doing the best that we can, we really are. It's, I don't agree with the moves, but I have to vote on something. So that.
So you stand on?
I guess I'll leave it, I mean, it was, I think it was six to eight, six to two, so I'll leave it, it was the majority of the committee, I'll leave it, I guess. I just want to make sure we have every potential location available while we make that next decision.
Correct.
But again, it came, it was recommendations from cabinet and, you know, one on the cabinet and then others within the community that work there, so.
So Mr. Gomes, you made a motion, it's up to you, I mean, there wasn't a second on it yet, do you want to, do you want to just pull your motion until next Tuesday, it will give Jamie, it will give Dr. time to work with our DSC partners, make sure we do not violate open meeting law, do not have a majority there to be able to see the site?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, there's no motion on the floor at this time. So again, the Vice Chair and I will work with Dr. Cobb, we can work with all the membership to make sure those that want to attend that site visit, sites, plural, sites visit, but again, we just have to make sure, not to disrespect anybody, but we cannot violate open meeting law. So really, there's no other matters on the facility moves at this time, but we need to take a final vote a week from today. Resolution matters, Mr. Vice Chair Rodriguez, resolution regarding dropout age. Tony, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Last week, we took a vote unanimously approved by this body to draft up a resolution to submit to mask, working with legal counsel, Sarah Spatafor, and she drafted up some language with assistance, and thank you to the committee members that submitted their language. So we comprised this, I emailed everyone of the language, and also you have it in front of you. Does anybody want to read it into record? Nobody?
You should read it.
I would read it, I'm just saying that, I wonder if somebody wants the opportunity, but I'll read it. So resolution to increase compulsory attendance age submitted by the Brockton School Committee. Where is the compulsory, my tongue here, let me drink some water, because, all right, let's start again. Whereas compulsory school attendance refers in the minimum and maximum age required by each state in which a student must be enrolled in attending public schools or some equivalent accredited education program defined by law. And whereas an increased compulsory attendance age reflects the realities of the 21st century with the increased need for higher levels of education, and whereas an increased compulsory attendance age improves economic and social mobility across the lifespan and counters childhood poverty and enabling students experiencing poverty to stay in school longer than, longer and complete their education. And whereas an increased compulsory attendance age aims to reduce racial and class disparities in education attainment, and whereas the economic statistics show high school dropouts more likely than graduates to be poor, unemployed, or wind up in jail. And whereas a growing body of research indicates that increasing the minimum school leaving age to 18 not only increases high school graduation rates, but also significantly improves the life outcomes of students who otherwise would have become dropouts. And whereas we are responsible for ensuring that all children of the Commonwealth receive a high-quality education, and whereas the graduation rates and post-secondary opportunities have been proven to improve when students are required to remain in school until 18 years of age, and therefore be resolved that mask recommend, therefore be it resolved that mask recommends that the Massachusetts Legislature increases the compulsory attendance age from 16 to 18. So this was, you know, the back and forth with a lot of members to draft up this resolution. Mr. Sullivan, Representative Vega, we attended a meeting with mask and it was a unanimous vote on their end, and I thank the committee for supporting this, and we could take a motion, once this is approved, this will be submitted to the mask representatives where they will read it into record in mid-June, and then from there in November, it would be presented at the mask conference where the body will vote, and then they will work on some other language and fine-tune and everything, and then presenting it to the legislature for adoption.
Form of a motion, Mr. Vice Chair?
Form of a motion to adopt the resolution to increase the age from 16 to 18 to be submitted by the Brockton School Committee to mask.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Rodriguez, it was properly seconded by Ms. Azak, although Mr. Gomes was pretty close on that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the roll, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, so that's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Tony, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will, we will get that to mask, we also will get a copy to be put on record with the city clerk's office as well, we'll file that with a clerk as well. At this time, we're gonna go on to the next agenda item on unfinished business, public hearing, FY 2025 school choice meeting, May 21st, 2024. We did have at 6:45 this evening, a public hearing, it was chaired by the Vice Chair, Tony Rodriguez. It was opened lawfully, there were no public comments, we did wait at appropriate time, and then the public hearing was closed, there was no comments from the membership of the school committee, then there was a motion adjourned. So at this time, could we entertain a motion relative to a potential vote?
Motion to continue to participate in the school choice program for grades six, grades nine to 12.
Motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, was properly seconded by Ms. Oliver. I will read the roll, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well, that does pass unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody, on that. We'll now go on to number six, new business discussion and potential vote regarding the Tuesday, June 18th, 2024 regular school committee meeting, Brockton High School, Georgia Mram Little Theater, 7:00 PM, date change. It was brought to the attention, to my attention, and I believe the Vice Chair, by Dr. Cobb. June 18th is technically a regular school committee meeting, but we know that that's the night that the President of City Council will be hosting the council hearing of the budget for 2025. So we need to take a lawful vote of this body to take a date change. Location change will not be needed, it will still be here, Brockton High School, Georgia Mram Little Theater, 7 o'clock would be the time. The Vice Chair and I talked about it today with Dr. Cobb, we believe it should be on Wednesday, June 26th. Why it wouldn't be Tuesday is that President Rodriguez is hopeful that 17th, 18th, 19th, national holiday, Juneteenth, we cannot meet, and then the 20th, but in the off chance that those three nights need a fourth night, it could not be the following Monday, because that is a regular city council meeting, it would have to be Tuesday, the 25th, we want to be there for the final vote of the budget. So again, I would ask, June 26th, Wednesday, here in the Mram Little Theater, for a regular school committee meeting, changing to June 18th, 7 o'clock start. Is there a motion on that?
Motion to move the June 18th school committee meeting to Wednesday, June 26th, at 7:00 PM.
Form of a motion, is there a second?
Second that.
On the, on the, on the motion, is it possible just to move, bump, instead of the 18th, just have it on the 17th, that Monday?
No, I would be there.
Or you have to be there.
Yep, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the budget order. You know, it really can't be that week because of the budget, and then Juneteenth as well, so. Yes.
Sorry, can't interrupt. On that motion, we have so much to cover, especially where we're in June, is it possible to move it to at least 6:00 or 6:30 to allow us more time?
Sure, sure, I don't have a problem with that.
Those that can make it.
Yeah, why don't we do 6?
That, that, I mean, that was slated to be at the Discovering Justice event at the Mowgli Center on the 26th.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Okay. We could do Thursday, the 27th. I mean, it's a special meeting, we could do whatever we want. Want to do the 27th?
Thursday, the 27th works.
Could you revoke your motion?
I will revoke my motion.
Revoke, Anna, could you revoke your second?
I revoke my second.
It's a regular school committee meeting, if you're changing.
Huh?
It's a regular.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's a regular school committee meeting.
Not special.
No, you're right, I stand corrected. So again, there's no matter before us right now, but it was revoked, but the June 18th date, 2024, needs to be changed. What is the will of the committee? The 27th of June, which is the Thursday, again, and we could do it at 6 o'clock, if that's the will of the committee, whatever the will of the committee is, but I guess Wednesday doesn't work. I need a motion, please?
Are we gonna do 6 or 6:30? Doesn't matter.
What's better for you, 6?
Motion to move the June 18th school committee meeting to Thursday, June 27th, at a time to be 6:00 PM.
Second.
Here in the Little Theater.
In the Little Theater.
Hey, motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, it was properly seconded by Ms. Oliver, again. I need to read the roll, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Vega?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, so then our 18th will be changed, the following week should be 27th of June on Thursday, 6:00 PM, not 7:00 PM here. We do have Agenda Item 7, School Safety and Security Police Liaison. I know Chief Perez had indicated to me that there are at least one officer that would give an update, and if we had any questions, I know Principal McCaskill's here as well, but I don't know which officer was gonna speak tonight.
There's only one.
Come on down. It's gonna be short and sweet. It's gonna be short and sweet. I guess the chief didn't tell you. From your, from your perspective, are things going well on the safety aspect here at Brockton High School?
Yeah, I think we've, we've managed to clamp down a little bit on some other things that are happening. We've been very proactive, both in school and outside of school, so we're trying our best with what we have.
Absolutely, thank you. Any questions for the officer at this time? Ms. Oliver, please?
I was gonna send out an email, just a request for Thursday track meet for the middle school, can we get some police presence and a little bit more staff?
School police leadership, he can't.
Oh, okay, I'll send out an email, because I was there last week, we just need a little bit more presence.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll work on it, I'll be there Thursday, too.
Oh, you will?
Yes.
I'll see you there.
I'll be there. Thank you, officer, thank you. Principal McCaskill, anything you wanted to share at this time? Thank you for always being here. Joyce, I'm sorry, did you have a question? Take Sarah. Principal, good evening.
Good evening, good evening again. Just, just a few things. One, I want to thank the hall staff, our floor teachers, our safety and security specialists, as well as our administrators, for their due diligence and their supervising of the hallways and monitoring. Again, as we go along, the weather gets a little bit warmer, it gets a little bit tougher, but I just want to really thank their efforts at this time. To alleviate some of the issues that we have with the weather as it changes, students leaving in fifth and sixth period, so what we had to do was change our duty rosters, where we are moving people more down to cover our doors, which leaves us a little sparse in the hallways, thus causing us to close down some of the bathrooms. I know you were getting issues about the bathrooms early on, but again, due to staffing, we really have to do our due diligence. So we do designate bathrooms that are going to be open for fifth and sixth period, but again, I think that has slowed the trend of individuals leaving the school. And lastly, we are still going through the Yonder process, the letters for Yonder will be going out, hopefully at the end of this week, we're just waiting for translation of it into Haitian Creole, Portuguese, Cape Verdean Creole, as well as Spanish, and then we will get them out. We have a tentative date for a Yonder night at Brockton High School for May 30th, which is a Thursday night, feel free to attend if you like.
Thank you.
And that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. McCaskill at this time? Mr. Vega, please?
Quick comment, Principal McCaskill is also gonna be attending a family forum that's going on at West Middle School on June 5th at 7:00 PM. It'll be an opportunity to hear about the transition from Brockton Middle Schools to the high school. Anybody who's interested in registering can click this QR code. Yeah, thank you, Principal McCaskill.
Thank you. Thank you again, Principal, for what you do every day. Going to Agenda Eight, which is announcements, I mentioned it earlier.
Some question, Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
That Yonder night, what time, is that gonna be here at the high school, and what time?
At the high school, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, in the auditorium?
Yes.
Okay.
Announcements, again, we will be calling a special school, as Chair, I'm gonna be calling a special school committee meeting, 7:00 PM, next Tuesday, which is May 28th here at Brockton High, I'll work with the Vice Chair to get the agenda out, but that's the announcement. Any other announcements for the membership? Ms. Oliver, followed by Ms. Azak, please.
There's a special Future Educators of Color Conference happening on this Saturday, May 25th, at Middle School. Please attend. It doesn't say a time, so I think they do have it posted on the website. Oh, it is right there, thank you very much, whoever just posted.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you.